Good afternoon, everyone. Alright, it's good evening now. Thank you for joining us for the October 23rd Board of Education meeting. We will go ahead and before we do roll call, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. So at this time, if you would silence your cell phones and remove your hats, please, as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I always love it when we have so many students in the audience because it makes that part a lot more fun. Anyway, if we can move on with roll call, please, Mrs. Kellum.
Haney, Hanson, Maker, Monique, Murphy, Reimerson, and Locke.
Present. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So move forward.
And we've been seconded. All those in favor? Adam, opposed? Motion carries. Up first this evening, as always, is our, we'll do our reports and we will start. Our student board representative couldn't be here this evening due to a volatile commitment, but she did leave a report with Mr. Siselski, so we will hear Ms. Stories report.
Thank you. And this is from Ms. Story. Good evening. I should be back to reporting to you at the next meeting, but until then, I have a little update for you. Homecoming was a big success in the multipurpose building and office. Everyone I've talked to agreed that they would love to see future events being held there. Fall sports are continuing through their seasons and coming to an end at the high school. Football is four and four and they claim out pleasant this Friday. Volleyball is moving into district week and are currently sit at a record of 24, nine and one and playing Kyle this evening. Soccer is 792 and plays Goodrich tonight. Plays Goodrich tonight because on Saturday, they became the district champions, so congratulations. This past Monday, Lizzie was able to attend a school board student leaders conference and learn about leading, communicating, subcommittee structures, roles, responsibilities, and so much more. It was such an amazing experience altogether for making new friends to walking out of the building, feeling confident in my role as a student board leader. I know we have some student recognitions tonight, so I won't keep you guys long. I know how much Miss Lux loves this. I can't wait to be back. Thank you, Lizzie Story.
She's right about that. I always say student recognition is the best part of any board meeting. And this is the first one we've had, I think, since May, so I thank you for being here. It's a lot of fun. Yes, and Ms. Elizabeth Story is our student board rep. For those of you that might not be aware, she's been on the board with us since probably last March, I would say February timeframe, as a student board rep. And it's been really nice to have, like, you know, a consistent student from the high school who provides a voice on behalf of the students. And also she attends meetings with principals and leaders at all of the buildings on our campus, so she can get feedback for what's going on at elementary schools and such as well. So it's been a really good experience. And I think it's noteworthy to mention that she was also crowned the homecoming queen. So she's not here, but congratulations to Lizzie from the board on that honor as well she very much deserving. Up next, we will have the superintendent's report, Mr. Siselski.
Thank you. I do have a couple of things to report out on. First of all, in response to public comments, after the last board meeting, I did contact Tabitha Rampberg to discuss her comments and concerns. Tara Phillips also addressed the board at the last meeting about the process the board goes through when determining policies, specifically board policy 2264, non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. A process includes the following. We are made aware of policy and administrative guideline recommendations through communications with NEOL, our board-approved policy vendor. We meet with a NEOL representative to vote for policy updates and why the revisions are being recommended. The board is provided with a redlined version of the policy. This version includes policy language that is removed and/or edited and includes the legal statutory standards which each board member can review. The board also receives a highlighted update that speaks to the specific changes of the policy and why the updates are being recommended. The policy recommendations are then brought to a board during a board meeting for a motion, possible discussion, and possible vote, depending on if a motion is made and/or supported. I was gonna address, I also was able to attend the student board representative leadership conference with Lizzie on Monday, and she talked about that, so I'll move on. On Tuesday, October 15th, I joined six other Linden Community staff members for the Second Annual Mental Health Symposium. The symposium was sponsored by Genesee Health Systems and the GISD. The purpose of the symposium was to provide guidance and strategies and bring awareness to students, staff, and parents on mental health. Presentations included the Science and Power of Hope 2.0 by Dr. Angela Ferris, The Power of Physical Activity and Playing by Dr. Rick Furkel at Central Michigan University, and Positive Patrol, The Power of Dog Therapy in Schools, and that was presented by Lake Fenton Community Schools. And we're fortunate to have Ruby here this evening, so if you see her walking around, feel free to pat her. That's all I have.
I feel like we should acknowledge how far Ruby has come as well. She's laying down and not working at anyone. Look, she's all mature now. Are there any board members with reports this evening? Alright, so now that leaves me with the microphone, and I do apologize again. I've been struggling with this upper resting breath thing for weeks now, and we'll try to get through it without getting too annoying to everyone. Mr. Haney has caught it as well, so Mr. Maker's caught breaking it all now. Find a new seat, Scott. Oh, okay, good, we're all perfect. The only thing I wanted to mention to everyone is a couple of things. One, Ms. Hanson and myself attended GISD event last Thursday on MCAN, which is the Michigan College Access Network, and their initiative for 60 by 30, which is to have 60% of Michigan students enrolled in some type of college, university, or trade program with, like, approved accreditation programs by 2030. Come to find out, I knew this was a statewide initiative, but it's also a national initiative, I guess, which I was unaware of. More interestingly than that, though, I found their, the second part of the presentation, which was done by the GISD staff, on the Genesee College and Career, there's one more C there, College, I already said that. Anyway, it's GCCA, yeah, Career and College. They have a really cool website, though. It's called Beyond Graduation. I'm sure parents probably, if you are getting emails from our counseling staff for your high school students, please click those links and pay attention because it's called Beyond Graduation: Resources for Career and College Planning. It's an excellent website. I was looking through it. I work at a university and I was, like, super impressed with all of the links that they have on here for filling out the FAFSA, applying to colleges, information about when colleges are visiting the local schools, information on GCI, like, basically anything that a high school student or a, you know, high school sophomore or junior that might be starting to think about their future planning could be interested in. And they launched this website not too long ago, and it's, it's really informative and I thought it was a really interesting resource for Genesee County students and parents. So make sure you are taking a look at that if that suits your needs, so. And then the other thing, just to report out on quickly, I know Ms. Hanson will be attending the delegate assembly on behalf of the Linden School Board tomorrow night for the Michigan Association of School Board Members for their annual leadership conference. So thank you, Brooke, in advance for being there on behalf of our board and attending that event this weekend. That is all I have for this evening. Oh, I guess just a quick reminder also to Mr. Maker that I will not be able to be in attendance at the next board meeting on November 5th.
5th.
I'll be out of town at a conference for work, so.
We all have to hear your voice.
You all, I'll be better by then.
Sure.
Alright, now that I'm done, let's move on to the best part of any board meeting, which is the special presentations and recognitions. And this evening, I know we have several students with us to recognize, and we go usually in no particular order. I usually just follow the order that's on my sheet here. And as luck would have it this evening, Linden High School is first. That never happens. High schools never first on the list. I love it. I love it. So first, we will turn things over to Mr. Dreski, who will do our student acknowledgement for the high school.
Look at, yeah, he's first in line.
Just threw me off a little bit, but.
Sorry.
No, it's good to kick it off. It's always good to come and recognize some of our outstanding students, which we have another one, and I'll bring Drew Lurbe on up. Like to thank his family for coming out and supporting as well. This is unfortunately the last one on the Lurbe, so it's nice that we've had the opportunity to honor Drew. So I'm gonna bring up to his nominee, Mr. Jeff Nagy. Drew, here is your, got some goodies on the back for you. Not that you'll use that, but there's a shoulder bag for you as well. Congratulations.
I recommend Drew because I think Drew's the kind of kid that we want coming out of Linden. I didn't know him in elementary, middle school, but since he was a freshman, he's always addressing me in the hallway. Said, "Morning, Mr. Nagy," whenever he saw me. He didn't owe me for anybody. And he kinda carries that. Now he's in my class this year, and I know he plays multiple sports, high GPA, looking at various things in college. I, the personality he has, when he finds the topics he struggles on, he's reaching out to the, he makes the right moves. He's reaching out to the people that are strong in that topic. He's asking the right questions. I think this is kinda what we're going for to produce out of Linden from the academic side. Just really good kid, good personality, never hear a negative thing from him. And I think a lot of that is with the family, too. Emma was that same way. And when Mom told me Emma number one Student of the Month before, I was kinda surprised with that, too, so I wish I had another idea with these two. But yeah, definitely Student of the Month material, everything that we want coming out of here. Congrats, sir.
I always comment to the high school student of the month that, I know it may not seem like a big deal to you, and you're the kind of student that just by nature comes by doing all of the awesome things that Mr. Nagy mentioned, but to be the only student recognized as Student of the Month from the high school is like a really big honor. So you should be really proud of yourself. Congratulations. As a parent who has multiple kids as well, I won't let your older sister serious under tonight, so congratulations, Drew. Keep up the good work. Alright, next up, you might think it'd be Linden Middle School, but it's actually not on my list. Central Elementary is next, so we will have Mrs. Morford come up for her Student of the Month. Sorry, I didn't see you here.
Just hiding.
Thank you.
I would like to introduce Jamie Jordan, our music teacher. We have two students that we would like to recognize tonight. Aubreyelle Woods as well as Julia McGraw. Come on up, girls. This is your team.
As she said, I'm Jamie Jordan, the music teacher at Central, and I am privileged to present not one, but two outstanding students chosen by Mrs. Stockford, the gym teacher, Mrs. Books, the art teacher, and myself to be Students of the Month from Central. Aubreyelle Woods and Julia McGraw are outstanding fifth grade students. According to Mrs. Books, these two students' creativity, willingness to go above and beyond, and positive energy do not go unnoticed in the art room. Mrs. Stockford said, "Jim, they are hard workers and kind, caring students." Both teachers said, "They are a pleasure to have in class." I concur with all of those statements. Julia and Aubreyelle always come into class with a smile and enthusiasm. They work hard and are always willing to help other students and me. Julia even puts up with me when I accidentally call her Maggie, the name of her little sister. I have both of them. To all of these incredible attributes, I can now add community activists. On the first day of class this year, I was excited to tell the students about the new class set of ukuleles we received from the district this year. As I was telling the class about all of the fun we were going to have learning to play the ukuleles, I mentioned in passing that some of my classes were bigger than expected and that I needed three more ukuleles. It was just mentioned in passing, but these two young ladies heard what I said and, like usual, wanted to help. Before I knew it, they had set up a lemonade for ukulele stand in front of Alpine Market, choosing to use one of their Saturdays off school to spend the day out in the cold and wind, raise money for their school. I am happy to say they were successful and not only raised enough for the three ukuleles, but also for two instruction books to use for them. These students embody what we hope as teachers to instill in our students. They saw a problem, thought of a solution, made a plan, and then executed that plan on their own. Yes, they sought the help of adults, but it was all their idea, Julia and Aubreyelle. All three of us, Mrs. Stockford, Mrs. Books, and I, are excited to follow these young ladies as they grow. We know they are going to do incredible things. As I said when I started, I am privileged to present Student of the Month for Central Elementary to Aubreyelle Woods and Julia McGraw.
Had a good picture. What an amazing thing you girls did for your school. That makes me happy and also wants me to remind you that if there's a need like that in the future, you can come to a school board meeting and tell the school board what the school needs. I'm always telling students, you can come to any school board meeting and share your thoughts on what's going on at your school, yet no one has taken us up on that offer, including my own daughter, who I tried to put her on the spot one day. She was at a meeting and she was like, "No, I'm not gonna say that." Anyway, but the school board is always interested in hearing what students have to say about the school as well, so congratulations and keep up the good work. Alright, up next is Linden Elementary. Mrs. McCarradich is here. She was at the Student of the Month, so I have a couple of teachers are here as well, so thank you.
Alright, good evening. I have the pleasure to introduce one of our Linden leaders. She's a third grader in Mrs. Bader's class, and her teacher, Mrs. Bader, and Mrs. Nyman are here, so if you guys can come on up. Skyler, run out. This is all the good stuff in here. Both their teachers, her and her teachers have some great things to talk about.
Thank you. I'm Skyler. Alright, hello, I'm Stacy. So from day one of this school year, Skyler has been such a leader in the classroom. She always comes in with a smile on her face, excited to learn. Skyler loves to share her ideas with others. Her hand is always one of the first ones up in the classroom. One thing I really love about Skyler is that she's not afraid to take risks in the classroom. She's always excited to learn and try something new, even if it is difficult. She's also always willing to ask for help if she needs it. Skyler is so responsible. She comes in every morning and gets right to work. As a member of my class and Mrs. Nyman's, she transitions quickly and jumps right into whatever the rest of the class is doing. And most importantly, Skyler is so kind. She is always there to offer friends a smile and a kind word. She is always so eager to help others and is such a positive force in our classroom. Skyler, your eagerness to learn, sense of responsibility, and kindness are going to make you an unstoppable force throughout your life. I am so grateful to be your teacher.
I'm so pleased to be here. I'm Heather Nyman. To talk about you, Skyler. So in the audience, would you do me a favor and just think about the sweetest person you know? Skyler is sweeter. She is always happy, always smiling, and always positive. Always. That nature, that being within you, Skyler, is contagious, and all of those around you feel that light, and we feel you shining within us. So maybe a week or two ago, we had a guest reader. Here's an example. And a guest reader was reading a story about a character named Twinkleweb, and she had this big to do on the stage, and she fell. So another character stepped up on stage, you remember this? Stepped up on stage, a clumsy character, and did the same thing on purpose. And I asked the boys and girls, "Why do you think Tacky, this other character, did that?" And do you remember what you said? You said empathy. Ah, that's exactly what it is. And that's what you do for others around you. You feel them, you sense them, and you take action to make others around you feel part with all of that positive energy that's within you. Also, something I admire about you is the way you work with others. Do you remember when we did that sort with a friend the other day? And Skyler was the example. We all met over and took the backseat at Skyler's area of learning and were looking at you and how you worked and how you shared and helped and worked as a team with your friend. And that was exactly what I had expected. So you are eager, you're empathetic, and you're a hard worker always. You love to learn, you love to improve. So Skyler, you are joy in my heart, and I am so lucky to be your teacher. And no matter where you are and who you're with, from now and forever, keep shining your light.
And before, Mrs. Nyman even said that. I was thinking, I was gonna tell you, never lose that sparkle, kiddo, because the world needs more Skylers and more kindness and empathy and all of those things. So keep smiling and being sweet like you are right. Congratulations. Alright, up next is Linden Middle School. Mr. Enders is here to present the Linden Middle School Student of the Month.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to come up here and show off our wonderful students. So those of you that were selected as our Student of the Month for Linden Community Schools, I want to say thank you. It's a big honor, and I'd like to present our October Student of the Month, Callie Smith, on behalf of Callie. I have two wonderful staff members in Courtney White and Tiffany Roerig that are going to speak on behalf of all the wonderful things that Callie means to us at Linden Middle School.
Ruby's gonna help us as well. Thank you, everyone, for having us both here. Again, my name is Courtney White and this is Tiffany Roerig. We are two of the advisors of the SOAR Leader Program at Linden Middle School. We are happy to be here again today to shine a spotlight on one amazing LMS student. When we asked LMS staff about Callie's character, we heard nothing but positive praise. Her teacher said that she is friendly, bright, and is always willing to lend a helping hand inside and outside of the classroom. Mr. Enders remarked that the student is a joy to have at LMS and that she is always smiling. With that being said, we would like to congratulate our outstanding student, Callie Smith, for being selected as Student of the Month. Callie is a member of our student leadership group, the SOAR Leaders, and she truly embodies the values that we strive for in that program: staying safe, offering kindness, acting responsibly, and remembering respect.
In addition to the amazing things stated earlier, Callie has demonstrated remarkable kindness by helping new students as they enter our school, making them feel welcome and supportive. She has also shown great leadership in standing up against bullying and inappropriate behavior, advocating for her peers, and ensuring our school remains a safe and respectful environment for all. Callie inspires us with her outgoing demeanor and the kindness she extends to everyone. We are proud to recognize her achievements and contributions to our school community. Please join us in congratulating Callie on this well-deserved honor.
There you go, Callie. I made a joke that she hadn't given speech tonight.
Oh, you want a minute, Callie? You can have the. I was just gonna say, at the risk of being creepy, but you know, I always put my foot in my mouth anyway, but I think Callie worked at Star's Farm this fall. I remember seeing her there. And so not only is she making a big improvement in our school by just being a wonderful student, but she's also making a difference in our community by being a friendly face to lots of people that go by Star's Farm. I remember seeing her there, so good job, Callie. Keep up the good work, everybody. I can't see her right now. Good job, Callie. Alright, last but certainly not least tonight is our Hyatt Elementary Student of the Month. So I see Mr. Stricker here. Ms. Nicole.
Good evening, and thank you again, and thank you everybody that's here, because we truly know that Linden's a special place, but it takes all of us to raise all of these wonderful, wonderful children that we have. And we were a little nervous when we first got here, and I promised her that each other works, and we're going last, so she had to sit for the whole thing to kind of get used to herself. You ready? So it's an honor tonight for me to come up here and to recognize Rowan Skergen with an outstanding teacher that you're so lucky to have, and we're blessed to have her here as well. Ms. Nicole, if you would. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. Boy, I'm going last, because you know I get emotional. I sit there all the time. Especially like looking around the room and I'm thinking, I feel like this is sort of a convenient reunion, because I've had the pleasure of having support members, children, Mr. Siselski, the infamous Haney Boys, Mr. Murphy's daughters, and now grandson. And then Drew and Emma. Congratulations, Drew. So well deserved. Maggie, when she was in third grade, she was also Student of the Month, so it's like, wow, all these great families here, and now I get to talk about another great thing, my great student. Rowan, boy, where do I even begin? I had the pleasure of knowing Rowan since she was just a baby in her mom's arms, and I remember watching her. She came to, it's either bridal shower or wedding shower one day after school, and she came in in a little jean skirt and cowboy boots and pigtails and this huge personality. And I just thought, man, I hope they send her to Linden School, and maybe by chance I'll get lucky enough to have her. Here we are. But anyways, like Mrs. Lux said, this is a great night. I love this night, and I have to acknowledge your parents, because we know we wouldn't be here without your parents raising such a great kid. I know, you're, oh, I told you. Rowan, not only is she a great student academically, Rowan is involved in dance and gymnastics and soccer, and I, of course, teased her, like Mr. Enders, and told her, "Well, you're gonna have to do a dance or something tonight." She said she'd rather do a cartwheel in somersault, but she has a dress on, so we're gonna pass on that tonight. But her personality, Rowan comes to school, always looking beautiful. You're saying, Mr. Siselski, dress good, look good, work good?
Work good.
Here's your poster child for it. And one day, we were walking down the hall, and I said to Rowan, I said, "I wish I could dress fancy like you, but I'm just not a fancy person." And her response to me was, "Ms. Nicole, don't worry about it. We all have our own personalities, and I like your personality." That's just the kind of child she is, and we know where she gets that from. Rowan, in class, she is the first one to help. And sometimes, I remember beginning of the year, we're trying to get kids on Chromebooks, and you know what it's like at the beginning of the year, trying to get 25 kids signed into Chromebooks, and you're, "Ah, hang on, I'm coming." And before I knew it, I turned around and Rowan was up helping other kids. And what I love about it is people see Rowan in class and they start imitating her and what she does. She's such a good role model. I am just so fortunate to be able to work with her this year. I'm so lucky, and I'm so proud of you. And I said this when Julia was in third grade, and I wholeheartedly believe it, because she's here again. I know you're gonna see Rowan here again one day. Congratulations, Rowan. You deserve this.
And I was gonna comment on how beautiful your dress was. I didn't know you were so fancy all the time. And I also love your sparkly shoes. And like Ms. Nicole, I can't get away with wearing sparkly shoes like that, but you got it, girl. Congratulations and keep up the good work. Alright, well, I just always like to mention too, at the end of the Student of the Month recognitions, again, a big congratulations to the students, and just to sort of remind everyone that something that we always hear in student recognitions is never about, like, students And just to sort of remind everyone that something that we always hear in student recognitions is never about like students being, having the highest grades or, you know, being in the most advanced classes. And some of them may be, but what we hear is about their character and about how kind they are and how they're helpful and just good little and big human beings. And so thank you, students, for being good role models for your student, or for your fellow students. And like Ms. Nicole, if I talk too long, I'll start to get emotional too. It's a, I think it's a middle age thing, it used to be like that, but anyway. Thank you to families also for being here, and all of you parents, like many of the teachers have said, your student wouldn't be here without your support. So this is, they're a representation of how you have raised them to be good people, so thank you for that. And thank you, teachers and administrators, for being here too. I think it shouldn't go unnoticed, like, it's a Wednesday evening, and you guys are here, not with your families, but here celebrating your students. And so thank you for being here to recognize them and giving your time back to them as well, so, great job, everyone. Gosh, and I always hate to do this to Mrs. Thomas, but that concludes the best part of the board meeting. We will continue on with our administrative updates, which happens to be an update, an amazing update for Mrs. Thomas this evening, if anyone would like to stick around and see it. But we will pause for a moment, and in case families have other things you need to go handle this evening or wanna go celebrate your students, you can exit quietly and get some pictures. And we'll give you just a moment before we continue on with our next item. Oh, no, all of you students that are here for class, you're stuck with us a little longer. This is not your get out of jail free car just yet. If you're lucky, if we hurry.
Okay.
All right, Mrs. Thomas, whenever you want.
This will take about forty-five minutes. That was really a great experience. In fact, I had several of those students when I was at Central. I had Andrew and his sister, and I also had Callie, I think at Central and at Hyatt and at the middle school, it's crazy, right? But right now, we're gonna talk a little bit about assessment, and I have a couple of sheets that I gave you a little bit ago, so that you have these as reference. Trying to give a little bit of background based on some great questions that Mr. Murphy had. So obviously, this is a quick brief based on the overall benchmark performance that we have, as well as our state summative assessment. And what we look at is we look at the NWEA, and we try to keep the data the same and only one variation, which means like we're gonna go fall to fall and then just change the year, so that it's still the same data, just to look at some trends. And we also, I show it to you in the spring, and I show you kind of the growth a little bit, how we do. So this is just out of the gate, how are we doing, keeping in mind that these kids, you know, have, you know, so many weeks off in the summertime, and then they come back in, and the first week to the second week, we do the screening for the benchmark data. So it's right out of the gate, okay? And then we're gonna look at our spring M-Step data and talk a little bit about school improvement. So what I'd like to make sure that you have a bigger scope and understanding of is that we are really working on a balanced assessment system. And when you're thinking about state summative assessments, that's, that's just one teeny part of the bigger picture. So M-Step and PSAT and those pieces, they're, they're state summative. They're the farthest away from a student, right? But they give us, that's what, what, you know, our legislation and all that requires. And then if you go back just a little bit closer to the student, you can look at your district benchmark system. Again, it's not close to the student. We wanna focus more of our energy and time, if you look at that purple area, on classroom form assessments and classroom summative. That's where we get the biggest thing for the buck. So as we're going through this, just keep that in mind, that this is more, this is the farther away from the child as you go, okay? So you wanna make sure we're thinking about putting things in perspective. The other piece I wanted to mention to you that kind of, after looking at some of the data, particularly looking at changes between like first and second grade and so forth, is that it may not be known that we have two different NWEA assessments. There's a K-two NWEA assessment and a two-five, there's also a six-plus, which Mr. Enders, middle school students will take that one, for both math and for reading. So in our district, when we were piloting this, they were trying to figure out which assessments second graders would take. We opted for the second graders to take the second to fifth grade math growth assessment, which has a little more rigor than the K-one. So there are some adjustments as kids take that for the first time in second grade. They do perform better in the middle of the year, at the end of the year, on that assessment. But it's more of an aim for us to see if they're on target for a high stakes assessment like the M-Step, okay? Just to clarify that, because you do some, see some changes in student achievement. So basically, each school, I lay it out for you to show you the benchmarks, and I kept the last three years instead of just the last two years, just to see overall. So like with kindergarten, some of those students may have had preschool down in Argentine, some of them might have been in our Young Fives program, either at Hyatt or Lymanell. But that's kind of where they start. We wanna be close to that seventy-five to eighty percent in the beginning of the year, only showing perhaps maybe fifteen to twenty percent below benchmark. As we start looking at grades, when they have a bigger discrepancy, that's like, we try to catch it beforehand and figure out why. Sometimes it's a cohort. Like, for example, at Hyatt, there, we're looking at a second grade cohort, we're focusing on that pretty heavily. Our interventionists have increased time and supports for that grade level. It's similar to like, for example, in Lymanell, they had a little pocket of students who needed some more support moving from second to third grade. And so that's where some more energy is that Mrs. McRevich is doing. In fact, I heard of a great idea about like a jumpstart that they're gonna try to launch for third graders in the morning to get them ready and try to close the gap. And our intervention literacy coach, a specialist really, Gina Stricker, is spearheading that with Vicky. So that's really exciting. But we try to look at that data to determine where's the biggest need and where do we need to support it. Central's data is, is growing, and that's exciting. We can see that as they're coming in out of third grade and they're doing pretty well. Last year's fourth grade, we had new staff members trying to get acclimated with the curriculum. Now, you know, they're getting more acclimated, and we're starting to see some growth with their data, as well as our fifth grade was pretty strong, especially in the math area. And actually, ELA, when we look at this in regards to projecting or determining how they might be on an M-Step test. The middle school, obviously, as you get up, they're, now they're doing another test. Their test is the six-plus math and reading. So it's, it's a little bit more where you're there too. They don't have a two-twelve, okay? So it's, it's different layers of that bridge. And right now, you know, when you're looking at that, we, we need to think differently. And so, for example, with the math, our math actually was the top in the county for all sixth, seventh, and eighth grade last year. And it was second grade, I believe, for fifth grade, so those kids coming in the sixth grade. They may not show that they're at the eighty percent mark here, but they're doing well. And we know we just gotta keep doing what we're doing, because on the, on the high stakes tests and on their grades and on all the other batteries, they do quite well. We still wanna make sure that if they need support, we provide it for them. Same thing with the reading. We did have a concern a little bit, and we'll see with the M-Step test, looking at the sixth grade summative last year, but for the interim benchmark system, this is where we're falling. And we know that we have some inroads with our intervention program, but it's not, we can't reach thirty percent of our population at the middle school like we can in a self-contained or in, at Central Elementary. It's a different dynamic. We did add for like the math, for middle school, Mr. Enders and I added accelerated math to that program last year, where we have a certified teacher who is the same grade level pulling roughly fifteen to twenty percent of the kids they feel need the most to get double-dosed. So instead of an explorer, they opt into this accelerated math class, because our goal is to try to get everybody to be reading at benchmark by the end of eighth grade. Okay, so the M-Step, those are some links, this is similar to our share, so if you wanted to do, give to any of those, they give you a little bit more of a brief on what M-Step is, as well as I provided the computer adaptive piece here. So that you understand that both NWEA, which I shared with you just now, and this document here shows you that it is aligned to all of the criteria that the state of Michigan requires with a, you know, benchmark assessment. And that our M-Step assessment is also, parts of it are computer-based, and there's a link there too that can give you more information, which will be updated in that powerpoint. This is just a snapshot from Unetrix. Unetrix is our new, a new tool that we use that takes our state data, it also takes things like NWEA data, and it gives us some good visuals and some understandings of how we're doing. So we typically score above state and county. In fact, county used to be higher than state, and now it's not. So, but we still maintain overall, if you were to look at the averages. But again, we wanna make sure we're looking at apples to apples and how we are compared to the districts that are similar to us. So going with Unetrix, I pulled several districts that were very similar to us, whether it's enrollment, fund balance, you know, frame reduced and so forth, to try to get a feel for how are we doing in comparison to a demographically similar school district. And, you know, you can see here, I, the arrow to where Linden is at, with, and I took benchmark years, like third grade with math and reading, and then I took fifth grade and eighth grade, trying to look at some of those, you know, end of, before the transition where they are ending up at. Typically, we are in the middle to the high area of that when we're comparing to ourselves to other school districts. The same, this one is for the fifth grade for the math and the reading, which, you know, tells us that our system, K-five, is working because these kids are performing well and showing to reach high achievement levels. Same thing with our eighth grade, which is, this is again, reading and math, showing you where they are. The eleventh grade continues to keep us in the top tier, okay? Now, I started digging into state data, like where we at comparison to other school districts, and we're more like seventy-five to eighty percent in some cases, right? We wanna be comparable to like the country data, we were talking about different schools, or like Plumin, they have a different fund balance, they also have different resources available to them as well. But we do perform quite well with what we have been given, but we're getting stronger all the time. And we can see that with the effort and the work that our teachers do every day. This is just like rankings for the county. I know that it is, again, we should be ranking higher in the county, in fact, we shot it in, of course, we'll show you that. We're typically in the top, you know, first, second, and third areas. When they fall short of that is when we start to go, well, is that because it's a new teacher? What does the curriculum look like? Is it tight and we need to dig in? We're gonna be unpacking, we've talked about unpacking and going heavier into the English, because that's also a review year at the middle school, which is perfectly, a great opportunity to attack that situation and find out what's the underlying cause. So that's where we're at with that. When you look at science and social studies, we still rank, you know, pretty well in those areas. And again, those cut scores, the state has very low cut scores, and they, they change these things too, depending on some of the litigation and so forth that statisticians can tell you all about, we can do a scatter plot, but we probably don't have time for that tonight. Now, with all that said and done, again, you know, we have assessments, but as you, the kids right here, they're, you know, the young adults in our room here, they, they're getting measured more frequently with formative assessments on a daily basis from Mr. Schneider or Dr. George or Mr. Landrum, and they're getting feedback constantly. The more we do that, the higher we'll achieve, and then a state assessment or an interim benchmark assessment will show those results. And so that's where we're looking at all the research, and last year, we spent a lot of time thinking about where our goal is, and how does that align with increasing student achievement and engagement? And so with our school improvement process, our focus areas are guaranteed viable curriculum, multi-tiered systems of support, and achieving balanced assessment systems. That is really our main target areas for school improvement. And with that, the one area that we've spent a lot of time in, from even our principals group, we do book studies and looking at ten strategy areas for building that balanced assessment system in our schools. And we've already started that work, and principals work with some of their reps on the assessment committee at the district level to bring that information back to the team. And so these are the targets that we've really kind of refined in our assessment learning implementation plan, that is a support strategy of our school improvement. And again, you know, thinking about how do we get close to the child when we think about that balanced assessment system, it's the classroom. How can we better support our teachers to make sure that we guarantee viable curriculum and assessment tools that are gonna match the targets that they're teaching for that curriculum and be sure that they give feedback to kids? So for example, Ms. Mulmire at the middle school, Mrs. Stricker at the elementary, they're representing K-five, six, twelve, and they're, they had just launched the FAEN coaching, and are gonna be formative assessment coaches trained at the state level to come back and support us at the elementary and secondary level. It's very exciting work that they're doing. We also have reps at each grade level across the district, K-twelve, that are helping us with our assessment committee work. And, you know, presented, like this summer, Mr. Schneider and Ms. Mulmire are presented with Mrs. Tissel on formative assessment and embedding that into some technology. And it was well received. There's a lot of different things that we're doing at different levels to try to support that immediate feedback, because we know that's a high-yield strategy to give kids immediate feedback, especially ones clearly aligned to the guaranteed viable curriculum. So that's kind of an overview. These are just some activities that we have embedded into this work, this ALIP, this Assessment Learning Implementation Plan, and these are some things that we've done starting last year and into this year that are supporting this work. Like I told you that we did that book study, that's the first line on this one. So coming up, we have a math presenter coming to present at our EagleCon next Friday on assessment clarity, so we're excited about that work. We have quite a few people coming to those sessions, as well as our own people presenting. I think that's it. I don't think they have a question live, but...
That means you're not taking questions, then, right?
So that is now forty-five minutes.
Uh, thank you very much, Mrs. Thomas. If there are any board members that have quick comments, we, I'll give you a chance here, just, I just wanted to quickly thank you for the detailed information, all the links, the support materials we've provided. I mean, I don't think anybody could review through this and make any type of argument that Linden is not doing wonderful comparison to our peers, our county, our state. And a lot of that, obviously, it's our staff and our teachers, our administrators. I'm sure there's not a curriculum director in the county or the state or assistant superintendent that work harder at analyzing this stuff and digging into figuring out what's going on, so, thank you. That's, that is, that is, lays all on you, and, and we really appreciate it. And the information you've provided on the additional intervention, professional development, all of the assessment strategies, were just really grateful. Is there anyone that has any comments or questions? Mr. Murphy?
Oh, okay, Miss Brown, you go ahead.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas, great presentation, really appreciate all the work and thought that went into it. A couple of questions. I don't think I've ever seen the, the fund balance consideration for comparing other schools. So first part would be, you know, what, how do you think about how that could potentially play into why a certain school would place differently in the assessments or not? And then the second part would be thinking about fund balance and some of the investments that we've made and some of the staff over the years. Question me, do you think that we have enough, the right resources that we're gonna need longer term to meet some of the outcomes and targets that you have? And it's sounding to me like it's really about using those resources properly with the technology and training, and I just wonder if you can comment on that, thank you.
Well, I, I would say that, I don't know what, what happened, but when I landed into curriculum again, there was a plethora of grants that we were able to apply for, which just happened to be completely aligned to the strategies that we're working on. And so with that, like, for example, with literacy, we've trained every single kindergarten through third grade teacher in Orton, Dillingham, which is supported by two different dyslexia national institutes, which is huge, because we need to have that piece as well. There are probably about thirty to forty percent of our population where they need more of a direct instruction with word work and so forth. But in addition to that, it funded intensive support with critical reading, close reading components that we've actually been just finishing kindergarten today, where they spend a lot of time learning some different protocols and formulas to be able to execute high leverage reading experiences for their kids. And we did that all the way through Katie's building, we started that a couple of weeks ago. And so those are all grant-funded, which is huge. So I think that, yeah, in, I think in some cases... So I think that, yeah, in, I think in some cases, when there are, are more funds, you're able to bring in like the national presenters. I'm bringing in national people because, you know, renowned authors, things like that. Because as much as there's great people in our county, we have to be thinking about, you know, more, more about, um, leveraging as many resources as long as it's laser focused and it's not clouded and too thin. So I'd rather go deep and heavy in some areas. And so that's what we've been doing. I also tech, um, got into that Institute of Exelon Education, which is a pretty great organization. And they have, you know, great national and state, um, trainers who came in and we actually been doing a lot of work at Central with that company, trying to really fine tune the guaranteed viable curriculum, which I think is speeding up to, you know, the middle school as well and supporting it. But then just looking in our own backyard, having great CIA athletes like Melissa Boyer at the middle school, for example. You know, she's leading her team and we can see that they are doing quite well. That reveals a new curriculum. But we also, um, they recommended Alex, I was a principal at the time with, with Craig. And, and we were like, let's do this. This is what they want. So we fought for it and we got it. And then Melissa's making sure that people are accountable and that they're doing common assessments. And that's closer to the classroom, right? That's in the purple. And so it's, it's aligned to the state benchmarks. It's aligned to the interim benchmarks. And so, you know, we do believe that we have some great things in, in practice and we're learning from what's working.
I tried to catch some of the students' look when you said Alex. I know the middle schoolers love Alex. See how helpful it was for all the benchmarks? Remember the math program? You had to do like ten modules a weekend? Oh, you did Moby Math. That's right. That was different. Similar program. So, so see, this would be Alex, like when the students now get to high school, Alex will give that same trigger.
We did try to switch it up.
Yeah.
So we're like doing Fraclette Central, East Park at elementary.
Yeah. And colleges use Alex actually as well. So you might see it somewhere there. But anyway, I just thought it was funny when you said that. I was like, thought I caught a glimpse of a couple cringes over there, but I forgot that it's older than that. So, all right, Mr. Murphy, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Sylwack. Thank you, Mrs. Thomas, for the report. Thank you for alleviating my concern that I expressed to Mr. Selsky earlier today about the anomaly that seems to be occurring on slide six, seven, eight, nine regarding second grade.
Yep.
You touched on the N W E A. I'm kind of curious why they offer two levels of second, second grade.
Well, cause the second grade, if you think about it, the, the K one level, K two really doesn't have the same reading expectation as the two-five. And if we want kids to be successful on the M step, we opted for that model. Other districts, not possibly more urban setting type demographic places, it may opt for the K two.
So that's.
If you're under a Lexile level, a certain like one-seventy, I think they, they recommend the lower. But our kids usually are above that Lexile level. So we were able to use our data to determine we need the two-five system.
I appreciate that. And like I said, it looks like based on the third grade levels, we, we respond pretty quickly to the challenge. So that's very good. Um, you know, I've, I've come to appreciate more aspects of the N W A and how they can allow the teachers to better, uh, educate our students along the way. I appreciate that. Um, the M step to me is a opportunity for us to see truly on a, now, I had a question for Ms. Selsky. We're kind of, the test questions on the M step are the same for every grade.
I gave it as handout, sir. So you can see that it's actually computer adaptive.
Okay. So they're similar to what the N W A does then?
Very similar technology. They're looking at an achievement of a student and, and having the questions. And then they look at like, you know, unaveraged as a student, like are they fifty percent likely to go higher or lower? And they start to, to level you out that way. It's like an algorithm.
So it's not like, more like an A C T test where everybody would get the same question?
It's not like both students have the same paper times and everybody has the same question.
Right. So based on that, are we able to draw conclusions, um, compared to other schools?
Well, the one thing with the M step, you have to remember is that because it's a state assessment, it's very broad. So it's very far from the students. And it's like, you know, two hours or however many, maybe an hour and a half they might be taking on an assessment. And it's one day in the life of the child, right?
Sure.
So, so you have to like put it in perspective. And that's why I wanted to show you the balanced assessment systems. Cause we want to be careful about that. Because some students, you know, um, may not test well. Or perhaps they, they might be abduted in the combination, but they didn't seek for that or what have you. So, you know, you have to put it in perspective. It roughly gives us an idea of how we're doing. And clearly we're doing quite well in comparison, you know, we're in the top seventy-five percent to above. It depends on the grade and the content.
Right. And, you know, I appreciate those charts where it kind of shows you the level that are proficient, advanced, not proficient.
Right.
It kind of gives you a bar graph look, which is nice to, uh.
That's a nice tool. That's new in Munetrix. And, um, I'm kind of excited about that new tool. We had IDEX, which I was more familiar with, but Munetrix is where our county consortium has leaned into as far as an assessment tool.
Yeah, the bar graphs are nice, but it's still looking at a chart that has numbers on it is still very powerful in my world as far as saying that we had twenty-five kids that were proficient.
Sure.
Fifty that were.
It makes it more tangible in some ways.
Yeah, I can quickly process that. I mean, I look at a bar, I go, what is that? You know, quarter, quarter, whatever. Um, so, so basically your take on the M step is it's a useful tool still. Even though it's not what I thought it was, or be more like an A C T where you can kind of compare your district flat out to another district.
And it's the law.
Yep.
I mean, you know, we, we want to make sure that we're funding, getting the funding and supporting what our state is requiring of us. And as long as we're, honestly, it's a basic skills test. As long as our kids are exposed to, um, you know, Common Core, state curriculum, aligned to Michigan state curriculum, they, they, they do quite well. You know, we would like, I'd like to try to help, um, them do the best they can, especially on things like S A Ts so that, and P S A Ts, so that they, they have more opportunities if they're choosing a college compound. But it also supports kids who are going to the trades. Cause you know, even like with the A C T workies, that is a huge important piece to have, be marketable for a student to show that they exceed on a test like that, to be able to go into a trade.
So ultimately you talked about how we, how we could be better, you know, Mr. Montague, you talked about the money situation. Um, if, we looked at like, you gave us a list of ten here or whatever, students that are, are districts that are very similar to us from a financial perspective, it looks like. Who do you think, is there, is there one that would also fall into this category that's done just, who would be the best district, you think? What, what level of success would they have?
Well, what, when I put it in the Munetrix, these are the only districts that came that had the similar attributes. So we wanted different attributes. And you said, hey, do this, this, and this. I, I can do that.
Okay.
So I did look myself to see where some of the other places were. In fact, Michelle and I actually looked at some one day cause she's a grandma now. So she wants to know how her kids are gonna do and how the M step scores are for her, for her, her child. Has it been hitting piles to your grandchild's two? No, one and a half.
One and a half.
But what she's planning already. But, um, you know, it is something that we want to look at, like, you know, what, what's the different variable and how can we, you know, be successful? And, and part of it, and honestly, it's about hiring great leaders. And, you know, we're excited because we have that here.
Right. You mentioned like a country day. I mean, I'm sure that they, are, are they a private school funded? Is that what they are?
Yes.
So.
Sorry, I played them in high school.
Their level of funding would be a far above what we do. So.
And, and they also only have so many certain, like, criteria for kids to get in.
Right. Right.
So we have to be careful how we compare.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why it's important to look at comparable districts.
Exactly.
Any statistician will tell you, you're better off to say, well, how are we doing here? What can we do better compared to the schools that have the same makeup?
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Now, the other thing, I talked to Ms. Selsky was about the entire county. It's still like, always kind of see where we sit.
Sure.
There. And you can see the numbers are reflected there, but, uh, so I.
I think we have to look at the wins too. I mean, there's some wins. You know, even though it's a state assessment and again, you know, it's a one day kind of thing, there are some wins. And we continue to get those. And in some cases, you know, we start to creep up into the nineties as far as comparable at the state level. And it, you know, it's not unachievable for us. We just gotta keep doing what we're doing.
Okay. Well, I'm sure you'll make that happen. So appreciate it all.
I'm starting here too.
And your staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was something talking about like in comparison to the state. I mean, when you look at those numbers, we're almost doubled in many cases. I mean, that speaks really highly for what's going on here. So I think that's.
And we have to look at cohorts and things like that.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you very much, Cheryl. All right, moving along now to public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? We do. We have one from Trish Baggett. Just as a reminder for public comments, um, the board does not, um, respond to comments this evening. It should be limited to three minutes. Um, and if warranted, the superintendent will respond to it before the next board meeting.
Hi, my name's Trish Baggett. Um, I have two kids, um, in the middle school. Um, and I just wanted to take a quick moment to express my concern with parent-teacher conferences. Um, I absolutely adore data and, and looking at our data or, you know, Lyndon, I, I'm a school of choice. So we chose to come here. Um, and Lyndon's data has always been a great incentive. Um, but the one thing that I'm a little with the school improvement plan is there's nothing including parents, um, including the community within it. Um, and I think that it's warranted to say I'm a working mother. I'm actually a principal myself. And the fact that conferences this year were from eleven-thirty to two-thirty was very upsetting to me. Um, I have a son who has Crohn's disease. Um, he's doing fabulous here. I could not ask for anything better. But I still would love to be able to look at his teachers eye to eye. And I need to know, is he messing around? Is he using the bathroom too much? Is it warranted? Because I'm that hands-on parent. And especially when your child has a disability, you want, I, I need more contact. I need it. And so when I found out conferences were during the school day, during the workday, I feel like I'm being discriminated against because I'm a working parent. My husband works. And I do understand that it's part of the teacher contract, the union. But as the board, you have the right to go through that contract. And I, I just really would love to see some pushback on that. Um, you saw here today, all the amazing parents that were here with their kids celebrating that. And, and again, as a principal myself, I know how hard it is to get parents in. And I know how hard. But if we take that away from them, they never have the chance. Um, and we, how can we improve? You get the families involved. You get the community involved. Those are ways to be able to do it. Um, and so I just, it took a lot for me to understand this whole, you know, I know it might be something minute to some people, but in middle school, we lose our kids. We don't get to do the elementary stuff. We don't get to be involved as much. And then to take away the time we actually get with those teacher just, I know I could make an appointment. But between my two kids, there's six to eight different teachers. Fifteen-minute Zooms or five-minute Zooms or, I, I need, in a, in a world without COVID, we need these social interactions. And that is just something that I'm very passionate about. I know other parents are too. A lot of them don't like to come forward, especially the ones, you know, I obviously don't have an issue. Um, but I, I just really think we need more of that. Um, and I'm sorry, on a good note, I just want to say the middle school principals are fantastic. Mr. Enders and, and Mr. Bilil, my son was horribly bullied at Byron. And he's a different child here. So I just want to throw out the middle school. I pray to God the high schools is good. I'm sure they will be, but thank you for those amazing principals.
All right.
That's pretty good. I have never seen air com or public comment got applause.
From the students, yeah. All right. We don't have any other public comments this evening. Um, so that brings us to the consent agenda, which consists of our meetings, our, our minutes from our work session on October nine, minutes from our closed session meeting on October nine, invoices for the month of September, and the personnel summary sheet. And it is the administrative recommendation to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and supported to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
We're just trying to save the voice.
I know. I was like, I didn't make me say it. All right. Um, we have one action item this evening, which is a follow-up to our discussion from the last meeting on the superintendent biannual evaluation. Um, Mr. Selsky did, uh, share some information with us. Uh, after we ended a conversation, um, and has presented sort of a couple of updates on this. So I'll let him say a few things if he wishes to. But I hope everybody has had a chance to think a little more about this and review the updates. And, uh, we can take action on this this evening. So. Oh yes, it is an action item. So, um, it, it is the administrative recommendation to, um, support the superintendent biannual evaluation. Um, I do need a motion before, before we have discussion as it's an action item this evening. So.
Support?
It's been moved and seconded. So, um, now I, if anyone has questions or Mr. Selsky, I don't know if you want to present your couple of slides. You can do that.
So again, after, uh, after our last board meeting, uh, there were some questions. So I decided, you know, after hearing the board, try to put some clarification together, uh, obviously before you made a decision. Um, so again, I just wanted to go back to the mid-year progress report. And again, this is, uh, the same slide that was in the last presentation that talks about the mid-year progress report. Again, has to be completed each year. The superintendent is evaluated. So again, they go hand in hand for those evaluated years. Uh, again, uh, must be used as a supplemental tool to gauge the superintendent's improvement from the preceding evaluation and to assist the superintendent on improvement. Uh, the board shall develop, uh, in consultation with the superintendent, a written growth plan, a written goals that includes the goals in training, uh, and is designated to assist the superintendent to maintain or to improve his or her rating. Uh, performance goals may include a continuation of pre-existing goals. And that's something that we have done here in living community schools, basing those goals off the strategic plan. Uh, and I still feel strongly about that as you'll see in a minute. But again, through our strategic plan leadership group, we got very flex, flexible goals. So as we achieve or as things change in the world of education, we're able to get that feedback back from our community, uh, bring it to the board, give feedback back there and then move forward, uh, with any recommendation or any changes to those goals. And we've been doing that on a yearly basis. Uh, again, talking to Mr. Murphy, uh, just a couple of things I wanted to make clear. Uh, when you do a mid-year progress report, again, goes hand in hand with evaluation. It has to be in writing. And again, when we went through the training, uh, it's very basic. Uh, when we went through the training with Collins, a part of the, uh,
See if it goes.
Yep. Again, very basic. What are the goals? And as the mid-year progress report requires, what are recommendations training at the end? Uh, so again, we have five areas with our strategic plan. So we actually have five goals. Uh, but again, it does have to be in writing. And then, uh, the open meetings act. Question was raised, uh, can you go into, um, closed session? Which we typically do for superintendent's evaluation before we come and end up, uh, open session, uh, to make the record, or to identify the rating. Uh, but yes, under the open meetings act, uh, because this is considered periodic personnel evaluation for the superintendent or for an employee, uh, typically the superintendent in this case. Uh, a mid-year progress report, we can go into closed session to discuss the mid-year progress report if that's the decision. Uh, it would be up to the superintendent to request that. Uh, so again, kind of after last meeting, uh, moving forward, yeah, continue to use the strategic plan and superintendent goals. Um, again, they're reviewed every year. We get feedback not only from the board, but from the community. Yeah, we typically have done that at the end of the school year. Uh, I think last year we did one mid-year based on some board input. Uh, move the biannual evaluation process for the superintendent. Uh, and again, the board has always had, I've always been an open book with the board as far as, uh, improvements. It may not be public, uh, but again, I think I've, I've taken your, your recommendations, good and or bad, uh, to improve for the benefit of the district. So how would that look, uh, over the next four years? And we did four years because last year the board extended my contract for four more years. So for twenty-four, twenty-five, there would be no evaluation. We would do an end of year update on the goals as we have. The evaluation rating would be based on last year's for reporting purposes, which we have to do every year to the state of Michigan. Twenty-five, twenty-six, sometime in a January, February timeframe, we would, uh, look at a mid-year progress report. And sometime in June-ish, we would look at, uh, an official evaluation. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, again, we would no, do no evaluation. We would have the end of year update on the goals to review those. Uh, evaluation rating would be from twenty-five, twenty-six, and we would complete that cycle in twenty-seven, twenty-eight with an official evaluation in a mid-year progress report. So with that, I, I hope I clarified. If I haven't, please feel free to ask.
Uh, thanks, Russ. Uh, thanks, Russ. I, uh, appreciate you sending a couple of updates to, on here. Um, I know you made a couple of updates based on questions that Mr. Murphy had asked, and you mentioned that to me as well. Um, I, let's, just for, um, I guess, for the purposes, make sure we update and announce so that those are, um, on...
I realize that, I was just...
No, that's okay. There's only a couple of things that were different. But thank you, Mr. Murphy, also for asking some of those questions. Um, for follow-up. I know we had some discussions the last meeting about this. But just as a kind of a reminder, I guess, to everybody, this kind of came about after our July training from Collins and Blaha updated superintendent evaluation process. Um, when we learned that moving to a biannual process, um, is acceptable for a superintendent that's had a highly effective rating for more than, or for three years at least or more, um, which Mr. Soski falls into that category. And so we had some conversation afterwards about this. Um, as it is a labor-intensive and time-intensive process for everyone involved, it's an important process. But I think this, the mid-year review sort of helps to capture, um, sort of our progress along the way with that. So we were looking to move to this process. So, are there further questions or comments for Mr. Soski? Yeah, Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Ms. Slugg. Thank you, Ms. Soski, for making those considerations. Could you go back to that last slide? Okay, so, explain to me this end-of-year update on goals. What's that going to look like?
Uh, right now, I would anticipate it looks very similar to what we've done in the past. We would go through the strategic plan, um, identify the objectives. Uh, again, I've added more metrics over the years to really gauge, um, the growth of our district based on the strategic plan.
So the board wouldn't, would listen to that, but they would not really react to that, I think?
Again, in the past, we've always opened it up for discussion from the board, uh, to comment, make suggestions.
Right.
Uh, based on that, based on our strategic plan. It's higher than the board approving the next year's strategic plan.
Just as a reminder, uh, Mr. Murphy, I think it's April-ish, the second meeting in April, or maybe first meeting in May, that Mr. Soski brings the strategic plan update to the board. So that's what this sort of end-of-year update on goals would be. Um, it's after any, um, like, community surveys go out, kind of towards the end of the year, um, all the updates through the information he shares on the board reports, all that kind of information, so.
So my concern is, does the board have the authority at that point to say, we're, we think you're off track on these goals? We, we need to refocus on this or that?
Yeah, I would say yes. I mean, I think the board at any point in time has the ability to do that. I mean, if we had concerns today, we could share that with Mr. Soski and tell him we want to sit down and have a formal evaluation. As, as the board and as sort of the, um, I guess, the supervisory board of the superintendent, we would have the ability to do that anytime we wanted to take action.
I guess my feeling on the whole thing was this extra mid-year progress report in January and February. Um, seems like to me like, the end-of-year update, and, and, you know, like, my, my thought was, I know, understanding the rules. You have to do the evaluation sometime in the, what's our next year of evaluation there?
If we went to biennial, it'd be twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six. So it would be the, uh, spring of twenty-six, we would do your evaluation. So, we wouldn't do another one until the spring of twenty-eight, right?
A formal evaluation.
Right. So there's a two-year gap where nothing really goes as far as formal, uh, feedback from the board. You can get individual member feedback, but you don't have group format because it's never brought to a head. Where the board actually votes on the document, like your evaluation, and says, yeah, you're, you're on track. So that's what concerned me. And, and that's why I, I suggest is that we do something, like you said, twenty, uh, spring of twenty-five? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing the evaluation. Where is it? I might miss that. Where's our evaluation date?
Twenty-five, twenty-six. So it'd be like at the end of next school year. It'd be the next formal evaluation.
Okay, it's down, it's on the end. Okay, yeah. So, my thought was, I, I really want us to have a formal discussion. If it's the end-of-year update, that's fine. But it needs to be like in summer of twenty-seven. The halfway point of your two-year review.
I, I think, I think it's there, um, Mr. Murphy.
No, it's not there. It's, it's, it's earlier, it's later.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, end-of-year update on goals. It'd be the same as like this year, like at the end of this year.
That, that's not a formal process. The end-of-year is more of a...
Well, it is a formal process because if there's any updates to the strategic plan, we take action on it.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not evaluating like we would normally about what's gone on over the period of time.
That's the whole purpose of going every other year with that evaluation.
Yeah, well, again, it's a long time to go without feedback.
But you have, you have a superintendent who has been highly effective pretty much since he became superintendent. That's why you do it, is to reduce the burdensome nature of the evaluation process on somebody who's highly effective. If at some point, the performance is observed to, to decrease, it's within the language of the contract with the superintendent for the board to initiate action at that point. I don't think at any point does, is this board relinquishing its responsibilities to oversee our sole employee in the district to evaluate it. It's just that within this cycle, it removes that every-year requirement that is burdensome, burdensome on us. But more so, takes a significant amount of time for the superintendent to collect his data points and provide those scores. So we have all the drill downs on different areas that we're looking at. So, you know, this is, this is fully in line with what the expectation is of reducing the frequency based on a highly effective history.
Yeah, I appreciate that. But I guess my concern is, is that the tool that we're forced to use because we have two choices and they're basically identical tools, does not match what we used to use, which I think we felt was an effective tool. I felt was more effective than what we're forced to use now. Um, so, having an opportunity to slip our tool in, in the middle of the process, I think would be beneficial to all, especially to the school district. Um, and I think that the two-year timeframe is just too far to go with no formal feedback. The update on the end-of-year goals is that, does not strike me as a formal feedback process.
The, the other thing I think we need to keep in mind too is our board meets every other week, um, throughout the entire year, um, for the most part. And when we take action on any item that the administration brings to us as a recommendation, you know, we're essentially agreeing with supporting the superintendent and the decisions he's making. And if we started getting to a point where we're like, he's bringing crazy things to us, then we, you know, that would be a cue for us that we need to maybe sit down and look at the goals. But we, in general, are in agreement with what the administration brings to us. So I think that also shows that the superintendent is in alignment with what this board supports. Um, so with that, I think, um, you know, we can sit here and, and chat about it all day. I do appreciate what Mr. Soski brought that Collins and Blaha presumed shared, um, with a little bit more guidance than we got at the training on what the mid-year report would look like. And so I think aligning those to our five strategic plan goals is really, would be really useful. Um, and I also, I guess, want to encourage us, I know there's history with a couple of board members and a previous tool. But when you say our former tool, it's really only referring to like two current board members that were part of that process.
When it said our, it was Linden Community Schools.
Okay, but the rest of us have, since we've been part of the board, have used a different tool. And so it's, um, you know, I, I understand the connection with that tool in the past and, and the desire to like, go back to it. But I've never seen it. And I've been the board president for three years now. So if you have it, Steve, and want to share it with me, I'd be happy to look at it. But I, I don't think, I mean, at this point, we can just talk circles about this. Um, I don't know if any other board members have comments. Go ahead, turn them over.
Are we free to create our own mid-year progress report, the format? Does the board?
If it aligns with the evaluation, no. It would be very similar to what I showed as the example, where we have the goals, we grade, uh, I shouldn't grade, it's not a good word. We update on where we're at with those. And then the board would offer any type of guidance, good, bad, or otherwise.
To Steve's point, isn't that what you're asking, Steve? Essentially, is that mid, mid-year point for us to collectively design that format?
I, I, I don't think Steve's talking about the mid-year progress report.
No, I'm talking about the end of the year.
He's talking about the off-year.
Because we're getting a mid-year up in and top of it. I don't think there's a need for both. I think there's a need for, uh, uh, an end-of-year, on the off-year evaluation.
Just do it every year.
Yeah.
But not, not the same evaluation tool, but a, a more friendly tool that's more effective, in my opinion. Like we usually...
But putting another tool in gives us no guidance because it's not aligned.
It could be aligned.
It, it's not aligned. Because if we, if we use the tool that was created twelve years ago, it was designed on one set of criteria. The tool that we use now is based on totally separate criteria. So, potentially, we have this weaving down path with a one tool, the old tool, giving guidance and grading on one scale. And then the official state-reported tool would be totally other standards and different scoring criteria. So, it would gain, gain us nothing.
Well, in addition to that, the, the strategic plan has been new to Linden since that old evaluation as well. So that is another reason why it wouldn't align. It is true, because I have been on the board since the tr, strategic plan became a new strategic plan in Linden. And I was never on the board when we used the previous evaluation tool.
Okay, well, the strategic plan's been a lot, a long time.
I, I think we should, was referred to exactly.
The current, the current strategic...
Process and the current strategic plan of what we use.
We've evolved that over the years, okay?
Has that changed?
It's been a strategic plan for fifteen years, twenty years. So, the bottom line is we're forced to use a horrible tool. And I'm trying to get something that's more effective put into the mix.
And I, and I respectfully disagree. I think that the tool is, depending on how you look at it, I think it's actually a very effective tool. Um, it's very similar to tools that I've seen used in other areas as well, including in my own industry. So I don't, I think the tool is perfectly fine. Um, and again, we could sit here all night and debate the tool or our opinion on the tool. But what we're here to do is to determine if our very highly effective superintendent, um, should have to go through the rigorous evaluation process annually. Or now that it's been allowed by the state for us to do a biannual evaluation, which I can pretty much guess that every district is going to move to this model for superintendents to qualify, um, we can make that decision this evening. And I guess I would ask, there's been a motion and support to approve the superintendent biannual evaluation as presented. And I would like us to vote on it. No. So I'll call the question. Okay, it's been called and seconded. So, all those in favor to move to approve the superintendent biannual evaluation as presented? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, we do not have any discussion items on the agenda this evening. We do not have a closed session this evening. Um, so with that, at seven-twenty-two, who's standing to turn? Students, anybody can sign your form.